I will call this meeting to order at seven oh seven P M. As a preliminary matter, this is Aaron Van De Steen, the Chair of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Beth Schreiber.
Here.
John Barbriski.
Here.
And Debbie Jackson.
Here.
Okay. Good evening. This open meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you will find on the town's website at W W W dot graft and hyphen M A dot gov allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not interfere with public participation unless such participations require my law. This this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Subcommittee is convening by Zoom video conference, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. So for Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care of the screen, share your computer. Anything that you may that you broadcast may be captured by the recording and all supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. We are now turning the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda and after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I have the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care of identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will read the public comments and questions received in advance of the meeting, followed by real time board and or applicant responses. Public comments during the meeting will be conducted through the chat feature in Zoom. And I will read real time comments, questions typed by computer participants in the chat feature, followed by real time board applicant responses. Finally, each vote taken will be conducted by a roll call vote. Okay. So I will turn to the first item on the agenda. It was the call the order which she's done. Now the approval of minutes. So I think I can. You gotta turn it down.
It literally won't let me turn it off. I'll. Hold on a second. Sorry, just got you. I was gonna join in so that if I spoke, it would come through my thing, but I think you're the owl will capture my voice, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Never mind.
So I will hear a motion to approve the minutes from June seventh, twenty twenty two.
I was trying to find the minutes. I could not.
So I feel like John may not have been included when we were discussing minutes. I'm not sure because I've definitely read them.
Okay. I was trying to find in my email. I didn't see it and I didn't see. Do we normally attach the minutes to the the meeting agenda on the town website too?
We know we haven't been in the pack habit of doing meeting packets, but I know Roger wants us to do them for regular board meetings. We could go forward for this group.
So I guess where would I normally get?
You would have gotten any emails saying please review it.
Okay, maybe I just.
Unless we left you off.
This did. It could be me too. You never know.
He's the chair and she's the director.
Also, you did not attend this meeting, so.
I did not.
Yeah, which does not mean you don't get have to vote on.
Yeah. Did you happen to review the meeting?
No, we didn't.
No, I didn't even get to review the meeting, so.
Okay.
That's my fault.
Well, I will end. First of all, okay, we haven't made a motion yet, so we're discussing. So first of all, let's get a motion on the floor.
I make a motion for the June seventh, two thousand twenty three Policy Subcommittee Meeting. My second emotion.
Okay. So any discussion? So certainly we can entertain, we can send the motion and do a counter motion to certainly table the minutes if we decide we want to wait until John has an opportunity to look at them. But we have a quorum, so we could certainly.
You said I don't need to vote on the minutes.
So if you weren't at a meeting, you can still vote to approve the minutes because voting to approve the minutes is trusting that everybody else participated in good faith and then read through them. Didn't you can also recuse yourself if you would like because you neither attended nor had a chance to. And also recommend that we table it till next day.
I'm thinking. If everyone else reviewed the minutes, we just go forward with it then.
Yeah, I think they are rather accurate, so I didn't have any comments or.
I have one typo that I'm gonna correct.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes from June seventh, twenty twenty three, Aaron, I. Beth.
I.
Debbie.
I.
And John.
I'm sure what I say. Do I say abstain?
Yeah.
Abstain, I guess.
I declare the motion carried. So on to ongoing business, art exhibit and display policy. We send it back to the what's the word I'm looking for, the union representatives for review. I believe there was one comment which you you kind of responded to within the in the document itself, which I think was just a a question about if staff wanted to display art, would they be responsible for hanging it themselves or would it be municipal staff hanging it? So your response was, yes, they could display program art and the municipal staff would hang the art. Any further discussion on that particular component? Okay. I believe that was about it for that. Particular, this is the art exhibit display.
There was one more which I just checked, did not preserve that may go away.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so there was another question.
Yeah.
It, yeah.
Was that what I did?
Yeah, you just resolved it, I think.
Okay, but there was also one up here about.
Yes, which hadn't been responded to.
In the top right, there's a little comment above that. There you go. I think that one.
Okay.
Will kind of show you everything.
So some of these you can see are just proofreading things. Here it is with library departments need to put items through the jury panel. So this refers to section one selection that materials are subject to approval of the director or at times a jury panel. You haven't specified those terms. For example, if we presumably staff wanted to display art from program held at the library, can we book it ourselves? Once I know we would call it a staff led display. And there would probably be a calendar which staff can get first crack at, but what I can't I think have happened is we've promised the glass display case downstairs in November to legal women voters for the month to promote their program. Staff can't then say we want it in November. In September, it's like it's already been booked. But they can get in the queue or we could ask potentially legal women voters to reduce their time. But it's not, you know, set aside specifically for staff only. That makes sense or need clarification?
Yeah. Having a hard time reading the initial comment. Because it's not on the document copy that I have.
Would the library's departments need to put items through the jury panel? No.
Right, I would say no.
And then, for example, if we wanted to display art from a program held at the library, can we book it ourselves? You would book it through the administrative department.
Yeah. Yeah.
And again, staff would have first preference for the calendar, but if you don't plan ahead, then you could be used. You search.
Yeah.
By an absentee.
Yeah.
Kind of like with the meeting rooms, you know, staff have preference and we have on occasion had to move people, but generally it's you know, staff preference, but first come, first served. Because they're in demand spaces.
So they there are specific spaces in the library that really are kind of designated staff display areas.
Yes.
Right? So I guess if this really just applies to the public exhibit places.
Yes.
Yeah.
However, this did come up in conversation, which is under facility sections. But I did list the children's program room and teen and tween maker space as public space only because the public goes into them. And I am comfortable taking those two spaces out and saying that we don't allow outside groups to book art exhibits in those two spaces. It is reserved for the staff and their programming. That was a sense of what the staff would prefer. And I'm fine with that recommending.
Yeah. I'll let someone else speak on it first if they if they'd like to.
So wait, do we have confirmation that's what they're one of the things I was looking for? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with taking the children's room and the tween and the teen tween space. I think that makes sense because I know they have a lot of programs going on and they do like to rotate their displays and things, so. If that's something they'd like to do and kind of have ownership of that space, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I also think there may be a lot of opportunity though for artists who don't just want to display adult items that are geared towards adults. I think that's kind of why we put it in there in the first place. I can see a lot of potential for tons of, you know, local artists who were geared more towards children's space. And I don't I don't want to bar that opportunity. So if we if we do take that out, which, you know, I could I could still go either way. I'm not convinced that we should leave or take it out, but I think it would be nice to have some sort of way to either contact administrative offices if if they want to work with the the children's room staff to potentially put something in that space. You know, as long as there's a facility for that to happen. Because it's reaching the intended audience, but it doesn't open it up to the public coming in and walking through there and having a right to go look at the stuff. Kind of, yeah.
I think from a staffing perspective, it is a would be a hard line to hold because while there's a story time going on or a program, you can be in the program and enjoy the art. But as soon as that program is over, the room is closed and shut down. And there might only be one person on the desk. It's often the case. So now if somebody wants to come in and see either their art or they read about this art and they want to see it, there has to be a person present to get up and walk away from the desk and let them into the space unattended to do the art. As opposed to anybody can walk through. You know, the lobby space of the library and see what's hanging there. It can be appropriate for all or any ages. But I wouldn't want to say, oh, it's for kids, so it has to just only be in the children's room. I was thinking more of here's an opportunity. But when staff are pushing from a staffing perspective, it is problematic. And it takes away space that we thought we had for our programs.
Yeah.
That I would recommend.
I mean, so is the program room the only one that's that has that problem, you know, of a of a closed room essentially?
The maker's base too. I mean, we don't have it staffed. And we often close the teen room when the kids are in school. And now staff member has would have to go open the space to allow somebody to do the art or we'd be telling them come back when it's available. And then we'd be saying, wait, are you an unintended adult? Who wants to come in and look at this artwork while the kids are here? Like, that's generally just we discourage that. So it creates more problems.
It allows for loopholes. And some of the other policy that we've said.
So we could also just say it may be available in the following locations. And take it case by case. But the generally children's and teen spaces reserved for children and teen are created at the library for display purposes in programs.
I'd say let's leave it like that for now. So take these out of being part of the, you know, available for public display. And then if for whatever reason, there's a very high demand or there's.
Request.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's something that can always be considered. But that way it's not kind of by default, something that we offer.
Yeah, I can still see those spaces used for displaying art. But it doesn't necessarily have to be open to like allow all ages to kind of come through and browse it. I mean, but we're not really saying that in the first place. You know, it's not really these rooms aren't really open to all ages. So is the issue with it just saying that it's? I don't think anywhere we said that this is all areas are open to all public to view the art.
Right, I guess.
But that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, I guess I I mean, I would be. I don't know. Let's just say the teen are the teen room had video game art in it and I wasn't either. You know, part of the part of the library as a trustee, or I didn't have my kids with me or whatever it was, and I couldn't go in there by myself. I would be a little disappointed if I couldn't go do that, so. If we kind of don't allow that to begin with and just see how it goes, then maybe there's no problem.
Well, discussion from the last meeting, which I just watched again recently, was you guys haven't revisited our conversation for a month, but I have. Um, was it as long as browsing browsing? The collections in different departments is fine as long as you're not lingering and that was the discussion.
I guess if you're looking at art, you're kind of might be lingering.
William, you're. Yeah, but you're not. You can look at it, but.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll make it a point.
Yeah. I don't feel that it's necessarily. Again, I have the wrong perspective about staffing because I don't work here. But I don't feel it's it's necessarily a staffing issue when it's children that are already coming in to be it's geared for children. That's the audience. It's not geared for adults to go look at children's art. And I don't think we've said that anywhere.
Yeah, but we're putting it in the space that is not publicly accessible. All the hours of libraries.
It's locked during the day.
It's not open.
Unless there's a program and the children's program where the team maker space is open.
Well, that's why. Yeah, and that's why I liked when spaces are available.
Or special request can be reviewed. Anything like that?
Well, I took it out. You can put it back in or I can put it back in or we can wordsmith and under facility that you.
I feel like John, I feel like John is kind of going both ways because he's like, wow, there's something really cool in there, you know.
Well, no, check it out. No, so what I'm saying is like, let's take it off the options for a public display so that we don't create that problem to begin with. So let's delete it from here. Yes. And then if it is a problem of we get a lot of children's authors that want to have a display or just children's art, you know, people making art for children or whatever that is, then maybe we can suggest that they use the friend's corner or does is the display case outside the community rooms? Is that included here as well?
Yeah, it's actually right. It's under A.
Okay, so.
So A is the display case, B is the hanging display.
Okay.
I mean, C could be other space may be available.
Oh, okay.
Can please ask or on a case by case basis.
Yeah, so I'm finally, I'm fine with us adding in, you know, an option there too, if we want to leave us some room.
Yeah. I mean, we made an investment in the art rails in those spaces, right? I haven't seen the ones in the children's room, but. Okay. But I've seen the rails and then maker space. And it's, you know, it's I want them to get used because it may be investment inside of it. The teen room staff would would need to actively consider items to put on display there.
Yeah.
Or, you know, we or in this case, additional space may be available, please inquire, I think would account for those spaces, right? That is that kind of what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say that if if those spaces are not being utilized and we can figure out a way to make it logistically possible for people to for for. I'll just say for people to view it, view the art in there, then then we can revisit it.
Yeah.
I think it's a good starting point, though.
Yeah. I think we've we've heard all all feedback. And it's ready to go to the to the Board of Trustees for review and vote. I did see that you put bullet bullets in there instead of Roman numerals.
So the whole thing actually needs to be redone without Roman numerals.
Yeah, so I think.
And my bullets just line up. This is a change to a Google Doc at some point.
Yeah.
I don't know when.
Yeah.
You know, it's almost whatever version we're using, the bullets get all the formatting gets a hot mess. And so we just worry about it right before.
Well, this is a Word doc in Google.
And then we also still have this reasonable combination too, which is, oh, well, I don't want to display my my thing in the case. What else do you have available? Well, we might be all picking a combination. Let's see what else you can put it. Might not be when you want it, but where you might have to wait.
Is there? So I didn't read through the whole document recently, but I read through those comments. But do we have anything in here about like interactive art? You know, like if someone wanted to install like a you know, an interactive thing into the children's room, do we account for that at all? Or would that fall under that that final?
Jury panel?
Admin team?
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, like, like in terms of like the space, right? So the the last paragraph in this that you were you were just referencing. Yeah, so like if someone had something like some let's say water table, if that could somehow work in, you know, but non messy water table.
You know, had some scrutiny.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, as long as it falls under this first set of guidelines, which is it has to be educational, cultural, intellectual, charitable, recreational. Which a water table.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a really bad example, but in terms of like.
Yeah.
Needing its own space and. Yeah.
Yeah, but it could.
Oh, that's, yeah, for that.
I guess the other thing would be to take a quick scroll through and see if it says like that by art, we mean you know, print media or sculpture, you know, two D and three D as opposed to electronic.
Static. Yeah, static.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember.
Those content. Commercial. Yeah, I mean, there would be a limit for the size and weight. So if you were going to put in a TV or a touchscreen, that might be a limit. But again, like people could say, well, what about this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good then.
Under display G, all works of art must be hung using our staff's art real system. That's all I can apply to print. Probably.
Do we want to add a line? Like, and in addition to that sentence to say, you know, for hanging art, they must be hung using at the start.
Sounds around.
Hanging. But she says, don't bring in your own books.
Yeah.
And then we we have things that are, you know, weighted to a certain.
Load.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We have a lot on the agenda, but I will certainly hear one or two more comments on this one. Do we want to give it up to pass to make sure it doesn't say that we also address anything that's not static art? But you felt that.
Yeah, the the last sentence right there. Should any patient be dissatisfied with the reasonable accommodations offered? They may follow the appeals process. Oh, that's just for the policy itself. But I think I mean, I just like to think that someone was like had some really cool idea and they actually took the time to read the policy. They'd be like, oh, well, maybe they'd make an exception, you know, for this thing, you know.
Yeah, well, I think the jury panel and the administration administrative team would kind of determine if it's if it would work.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. Right, I think that you changed changed to hanging art, right?
Yeah.
Which doesn't say we only accept hanging art.
Right.
Okay. Very good.
So I am noting that town council looked at it and made a comment on Juney.
Yeah.
Have we made significant enough changes that I need to go back and ask?
July.
Another, sorry, July eighth, yeah, so. Who can check in again and ask if it's.
I don't think so because we took something out that was part of our list. We didn't really add any new language besides just clarifying what type of art would be hung. Okay, very good.
A real brief format it without running.
Yeah.
And then we get to go.
Yeah, I think if you're gonna use alpha lists. There's really no like item, you know, one A or two A or three, and we can do it that way, which is no like item A one, A two, it would be, you know, item three of section. You know, four A, like if you're using bullets. So do we agree that bullets are are fine? As a way to, rather than do like one A, two A.
Yeah, it was.
Because now we have A, B, C.
I'd say let's go numbers and then if you go in the level, you go alphabetical. And then beyond that, we could just be bullets.
Right, so we do.
That's what's in there right now.
Perfect.
Yep, I think that's good.
Okay.
Because that handles most cases.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. So we have the food kitchen policy. So just a couple of comments. This one. I have my copy. Actually. Nothing from the union. Except they're finding the addition of orientation to the kitchen is required before the meeting commences and is provided by the administrative team. So they agree with that change. Any further discussion? Okay. Do we feel this is ready to go to the Order of Trustees for vote at the next meeting? This and
and our display.
Our display policies or if there's something else we want to bring to their attention that may be ready for their review because it's I don't think it's fair to give more than two policies. Is there anything else ready in addition to these two?
I think the library maybe.
The the fine free library is short and so is the display policy that we looked at very briefly last time.
Display is new, find three libraries, a vision of an existing. So that's another thing to think about, like.
Yeah.
How many new policies are we bringing versus this one just changed in two or three weeks?
Yeah, I'd rather see these two go to the board because we've worked on it for a long time and we got union feedback. Whereas the others, I don't know that we have the union feedback on those yet.
Not yet.
Right, very good. And we're not voting on them at the next meeting, right? We're just going to send them out and then maybe discuss during the meeting and then.
Well, I think it's only fair to give at least two weeks for them to review it.
Yeah, so good for August.
Yeah.
When's the next meeting? As we moved it ahead or back?
Get ahead.
Yeah.
So July moved up to another nineteenth of July because this is what happens at the twenty sixth, then August, I think, is still unchanged for the twenty eighth.
We may have more.
So also Roger did suggest not that we want to have more meetings, but we could do a workshop meeting and just run policy to the board and have a policy only meeting. It's a workshop. And have a policy only meeting. It's a workshop meeting.
Okay, so they consider.
August, we'll have a great time to do.
That's what I like to.
In my opinion.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we certainly consider it um for the winter months. More all cloistered, ready to work.
Yeah.
Not in vacation mode. Okay, um, any further comments on the food, beverage and kitchen policy? All right, near none. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the material selection policy.
I did, I didn't send anything out. I have been staring at it and staring.
Yeah. I haven't spent a lot of time on this one yet. Um, so. I would like to table this one unless we feel we wanted to talk about it as a as a committee.
I'm buying tabling it. I think I sent in a bunch of notes um for the last meeting about this one, but uh I didn't review the video, like I said, so.
You did send in notes. And I read your notes on.
Oh, really?
The. Just because I just watched this whole meeting again the other day.
Me, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, this is my working document, which may not have taken any notes, but was simply, what is this supposed to have in it? Oh, a statement of purpose, a responsibility for selection, a budget allocation. Let me put in those headings, and it's it's like a mess, a mess. And then here's our reevaluation thing. So it's.
Okay.
All right.
Tabled it last time.
Yeah, I think there's enough on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Um, but for some miracle, we want to circle back. Um, it could, but.
Okay.
We have had. A patron concern since then.
Hmm, so. Yeah, but it was a non-specific. It wasn't a hey, get rid of this item. It was, why don't you buy more of these? And I said, oh, well, if you just ask for an item. Then we just put you on hold for it because we don't have the budget to buy everything. But if you say, no, you want it, and please put me on hold for it, and nobody else owns it, we buy.
Hmm.
That's not, yeah, I said, as long as it's got like a positive review and it's not self-published. And it's not outright propaganda, we do buy. But. But if you just say, do you have it? And then we say, do you want us to get it? And you say, no, I already read it. It stops there because your request is satisfied.
Yeah.
Um, but I invited the patron to come to a upcoming board trustee meeting, and she may come. To say that she feels we don't buy enough conservative or Christian materials.
Hmm.
Is it up? Give me some titles that we purchased, some that you request. Is that that's part of scope of the policy that we do wait? Patron requests, popular materials, as well as what we see professionally and get review sources for. So. Yeah.
Okay, um. Do we need a motion to table the discussion? Um. Don't believe so. Okay, agreeing to table it. Okay. So uh moving on, um, the find free library policy. I I thought it looked very good um. I know we were trying to include a lot of information in the opening section, so and some of it was taken, I think, from the letter. Um, and some of the research that we'd done, so some of it was kind of mashed together, I felt like um. Let me take a quick look. Um. So in just the second paragraph, um. I did my track changes, but. In the simple market, okay. So. If the second line, it says uh in fine free libraries, borrowers still return items and on time. Many libraries are. Even report that patrons return. Uh. More items after going fine free, right? Some people say, what do you mean they return more items? Can't you just return the items that you had before? So I was trying to reword that one a little bit. Um, and tell me if this makes sense. Uh, research further shows that in fine free libraries, borrowers still return items and on time. With many libraries even reporting that patron return patrons return items that have been missing from the collection rather than opting to pay the late fine. Another way of saying that, because I felt like. The message is. People are holding on to stuff because they don't want to pay the fine. That's exactly what's happening. And in other uh and when we were researching it.
Yeah.
Um, and it like. It felt like what we were written, they didn't really address it. So I'm open to other ways to say that. Um.
Yeah.
I have to say I was missing from the collection, but. You know what I mean? Did you uh did you rewrite it?
No, so I just spent all that time looking for it.
Yeah.
I know, but in front of everybody, so tell me where to go.
Yeah, so so the second paragraph, um, the second uh third sentence.
In fine free libraries, borrowers still return items and on time. Many libraries even report the patrons return more items after going fine. What would you like to change?
Yeah, it didn't make sense when I when I read it.
Okay.
Right? Anybody else want to take a stab at it? I feel like what I wrote isn't very good either.
Do you want to read yours again real quick?
Yeah.
I said, uh, research further shows that in fine free libraries, borrowers still return items and on time. With many libraries reporting that patrons return items that have been missing from the collection rather than opting to pay the late fine. Might be too wordy.
But well, I think the the end of, I think that does sound good, but the end of it isn't quite accurate, right? Because they're not opting. Rather than opting to pay.
Yeah, so I I before that I said in fear of paying the late fee, and I didn't want to say in fear of something. It's.
Yeah.
That made more sense.
And they have a late fees a barrier to people returning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we said.
Greater number of.
We said that before. Um. We can certainly take this out too, but um but.
You can also email it to me.
Yeah. Um, anyway, so so that that's one one part. Um.
Borrowers return a greater number of items. And that.
Well, that kind of is like, how can you return a great amount of items?
I don't know, rather than holding on to them because there's a time.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like that late video that like you don't know how much it's going to cost and.
I have Redbox DVD and it's.
Well, Redbox is makes, yeah. Yeah, when you hit, when you hit twenty dollars or twenty five dollars, they they're just like, okay, it's yours now.
Hmm.
Which is nice, because they don't, you know, you owe three thousand dollars for this.
Yeah.
That's tied to your credit card. We're not tying credit cards for stuff. Um.
We could also just leave it at the first line, which is research and late fees are not effective in bringing back materials sooner.
Yeah.
And then eliminate the further research or borrowers return items or. Libraries report patrons return even more items. And we need the research to back it up.
Uh, actually, just delete the last uh half of that sentence. Uh, you can, yeah, so the many libraries, because that's redundant. So further research, further research shows and find free libraries borrowers return a greater greater number of items and on time. And that's it. Um. I don't think we need to go any further than that. I don't think we have to mention the the fear that fines. Strike into the heart of borrowers.
And and with greater frequency and with greater, you know, um. We want to. Note. That more stuff is coming back, like you said. Than than previously.
I think, yeah, I I like the idea of saying that. I don't think it's necessary to put that in there, but.
Yeah, 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 but I think that's what the was trying to be said there.
Yeah.
I'm trying to. Wopping it off.
For all of our policies, this information heavy at the beginning. And just like a lie before the first Roman numeral, I just.
Yeah.
Well. Is it, I mean, is. I think I I I get the feeling that it's it's almost like a. Controversial thing kind of, right? Because you're you're just, you're no longer charging people for.
Yeah, and and you want to show that a lot of thought went into why we did this. Um, and why we felt it was um a benefit to the town. I think, you know, that's why we have this. Because this is not typical uh for libraries to have this sort of a policy.
Are we gonna have?
Except it isn't.
Yeah.
Now.
It has become standard, and now the network. Re- required.
It wasn't three years ago when we put this in place.
Yeah. Yeah, so you could start with as of September twenty second, September twenty twenty two, C W R's member libraries voted not to charge overdue fines. Period, like. So we are part of that network, so we don't charge fines, regardless of anything else that happened in the community.
Hmm.
Are we gonna have a big PR? Announcement for this uh.
We already did. We at the grand opening, we had.
Oh, okay.
I've added to my speech and browsing applies.
They're like, whoo, finally. People start just magically pulling things out to return.
Did you see that a hundred fourteen year item got returned in a Massachusetts library this week?
Yeah, I saw that.
I I wonder if they would find break.
I wonder what fines would have been on that.
Ten cents a day for a hundred fourteen years.
Hmm.
There's probably two cents a day originally.
With inflation, that's like.
It's a lot of money. A lot more books.
Um. I mean, this is kind of thin policy to begin with, otherwise. Yeah, like we're not collecting fines anymore.
Picking it up at the beginning.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Are we good then? I think we're good.
Yeah.
All right.
Um. So.
So it should go to the union.
Yeah, yeah, so item one. Um, I I think I just wrote. Patrons will not be required to pay fines for overdue items. Um, I think it said something different.
That are returned for overdue items.
Yeah. Yeah, because this is pay pay for overdue items that are returned, right? Because that means. Like, I gotta pay for this this item. Well, what am I paying? All fines, I got it. So like paying for something means you have to buy it.
Yeah.
That's how I run that. Um. Uh, and then the the part about. Um. Underturn uh damaged or incompletely returned items will approve fees as per the library's discretion. I think that's fine um. If if they take a look at something and they go, oh. This is pretty ratty to begin with, and it was already falling apart, so you're not, you know, you're to buy this. So that's kind of what you mean by that. Yes.
Um, no, so if you return a game.
Yeah.
And the game is missing, and you say, go home and find it.
Yeah.
Then it's still checked out on your card. So. If you don't replace it, then. There there might be a replacement. For the like the CD or the game, or whatever.
Right.
So.
But what what do you mean by the library's discretion? Meaning, well, you know, it's right now. But maybe at a later date, we'll let you go home and find it, but you're talking about something else.
Yeah. I think I you're right. I I do think it's more like it's old and we might be getting rid of it, so don't worry.
Yeah, we were going to replace that anyways. Yeah. Okay. Um. And so number five in Lewis finds. Um. It says in Lewis finds a voluntary donation can be made to the library gift account, right? Um. I think it was nice to say. It felt kind of weird just saying in Lewis finds a voluntary donation can be made, and then somebody's like, well, didn't you just say it's fine free? Why are you saying in Lewis finds? Like, that didn't make sense to me. So I wrote in Lewis finds, which would have been collected, patrons may make a voluntary donation.
You could say in the absence of fines.
Yeah.
Because we, since we did, they don't exist anymore. Um. So you're not saying, instead of the fines we're going to give you, you're just saying, because we don't have fines anymore, if you if you would like to give a donation, go ahead. Or we could even say something like, you know, in the absence of fines, we always encourage people to. You know. Or appreciate donations to the library gift account or encourage people to donate. Something like that.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement. It just felt by itself, it's like, well, I thought this whole policy was about not collecting fines.
So that's good enough, you think, or?
Good.
Yeah.
And it's local charity of your choice, because we used to do food for finds.
Yeah.
Uh, I still feel very strongly about Food and Security, which is also a platform for the Mass Border Library um Commissioners. Legislative agenda.
Hmm.
So, you know, people want to donate to that instead. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um. And. I think that's all I had. I just commented that there's also Roman numerals in this one.
Yeah, so just.
Okay. Very good. Any further comments or discussion on this one?
Can I make it all on page?
I think so. It was before.
You could uh tighten up the spacing on the.
Hmm.
The bullets there, yeah, those numbers. Other actual spaces.
So if you grab them and then push that same button again, and and just this just the spacing.
I did though.
Yeah.
I might need to go get my. Yeah, we're talking.
I did not bring mine. Does anybody have a hard stop tonight?
Uh, I guess I do at eight forty five.
Okay, I don't think we'll make it that late.
Hope not.
So we'll so do so does library.
There you go, yes.
Hmm.
Um. Debbie, do you know when you sent out the minutes for the last? Policy meeting?
I can I can find it for you.
Or or if you have it.
Yeah. Yeah, I can send him to you.
I've got it right here in front of me.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true. Yep, okay.
Okay, yeah, my schedule for the summer is like I'm working from home. Certain hours each day with the children there, and then I come in at night, so now I'm full time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what?
Just good, but I'm piecing it together, and I'm like, what was I working on?
No, I was just saying it because we had a second, because uh that was going to power cord.
I just asked for that. That was actually the wrong one, because it was sent on six. And you were copied on that one.
I was, okay.
Union.
June sixth?
It says union feedback. Uh, on policy changes.
July sixth.
July sixth.
Yeah, the other day.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll find it then. Thank you.
Yeah, if you have that thread, then you've got it. Yes.
Uh, I think I do have that thread.
Yeah.
Because I saw the other union feedback stuff. I think I just didn't notice it was roll up in there.
Very good. Um. Okay. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is the pandemic policy. I think we spent a lot of time on this from last. Meeting, uh, I didn't get to look at this one since last meeting. Um. Anybody have anything uh additionally to add to this particular policy?
I have a lot of things highlighted that I was maybe supposed to take out.
Yeah.
But I haven't.
Okay. Um, so we don't feel it's ready to go to legal yet. Okay. Um. Anybody want to add anything they want to share about that particular policy? Think this is more just a housekeeping item, um, at least I hope it is. Uh, so I have no problem tabling this until next meeting. Okay. Um. So hearing enough for the discussion on pandemic policy, uh, we'll go to the program policy. This. This was a really well thought out policy. I enjoyed reading it. Every kind of concern that I had was called out somewhere. Like when you're thinking about something as you read through, it's addressed later in the policy. So I didn't really have a lot of feedback on this one. Anybody want to go through any edits or changes? Yeah, the only item that I had. Early on, uh, four D. It says it didn't make sense because I think it was just a typo. Uh, it says in partnership with the Friends of the Passion Public Library Capital Campaign. Of order library trustees. I think that's just the or. Um, and then it made perfect sense. Like, I don't get it. So then five B. I I think we don't need to change it. Cause I felt like. Library reserves the right to decline a program. Or for a variety of reasons, including but not not limited to staffing, budgetary constraint, space. Or scheduling. I wanted to say something like work contrary to the library mission, but I kind of feel like that's called down elsewhere. I think that was fine. We feel like anything was too repetitive. Or that we don't need to include it. I see some. A bit about event management. The trained crowd manager is required to shepherd each library program. This is eleven A event management. Did we start taking that out of other policies?
We took it out of the food and beverage policies requirement for the public for when they are having a private event.
Right.
It's a free training that takes twenty minutes to do online and all it does is remind staff that. They can't block emergency exits, that they have to play out where the bathrooms and exits and fire extinguishers and fire poles are. Um, and need to know where first aid kit is and need to know room limits. And I think that that we need to require staff to do that.
Yeah.
Just basic safety protocol. It's a it's a change and it might maybe a little above board because these are actually standards for like nightclubs.
Yeah.
But if we have a program that has a hundred and fifty people standing and dancing, let's say in the community room, which is rated for that number of people. Then I want to make sure we're not blocking seats.
Or like a ball, a balloon or ball drop in the in the children's room, right? That was pretty well attended. Yeah.
A lot, yeah. Quite warm in there that day too.
Yeah.
Announcing the program and saying you have, you cannot lock the door. You cannot lock the fire.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I don't I I'm really trying to poke holes in some of this. I think it's really well written. Any further? Uh, discussion on the program policy?
Looking at cancellations. In twelve A programs, they've been canceled for several reasons. Is it a variety of reasons?
Seems like that way seems like it's so many reasons to.
Yeah. Okay.
Including but not limited to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lots of power, lack of step.
Do we really feel that absence of the presenter would hinder the programs?
We had somebody who did not show up to do music. And we could have sent everybody home. And I said, I have a ukulele. I can spend forty minutes and I can go sing to the kids. And I I did it.
Nice.
But that's not typical.
I'd like to see what you would pull out for the like the animal adventures. Like I got canceled one of those, you know.
You'd be like, Debbie, go get your dog.
There's an adventure right there.
How quickly can you get goats?
But I would like to.
Okay.
If Dr. Ticksara would just buy a goat, I hope. I hope they're back.
She has a lot of.
Oh, she was thinking about it. Oh, she was ready to buy them. The date we had the goat yoga. Yes.
Need to get all the trustees with goats on them this time.
Ah, I'm so sorry.
I think I'm gonna be busy that day.
It's only awkward and they won't get off.
Right, that's enough. Okay. Yeah, no shows, latecomers, chronic cancellations may result in getting waitlisted. That's perfect.
Yeah, so it it has, this has been something procedural stuff for a while and we really feel like we're at a point. Where we need board of trustee backing. So when we say, no, you were five minutes late and the program is full. Sorry, it would be disruptive and we need to come back again another day. We'll sign up for the next one.
Ah, that's interesting. So that's a good one. I like that one because. Okay, yeah.
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 And this is at the at the discretion of the person running the program, right? So if it's like dropping.
No, it's pretty much been set in procedure that if you're ten minutes late for an hour program, you've missed a significant portion of the program that we can't bring you up to speed. And it will be disruptive for you to enter that program. You need to be on.
Yeah, I guess would there be programs though that? It doesn't matter, you know.
Drop in ones occasionally. Yeah, or ones where we have more than enough materials. But often we're like, we have exactly enough buttons and scissors and markers and seats. For a number of people or a little tiny foot like facility. Some of them, it's a safety issue. We have a an intense new sewing program. Where kids are learning how to use a sewing machine and seam referred and needles. And that requires a lot of staff supervision and training and making sure that nobody's going to get hurt. So we can't let ten people. You know, it's it's a much more limited group.
So sorry, just to clarify, when you say like. Space is limited, you mean that if if that person doesn't show up on time, you're letting someone else in to take their place?
Yeah, yeah, like that person's already sat down and started.
Yeah.
Right.
That all sounds fine to me, so.
Yeah, but having that empty spot waiting for ten minutes for that person's like, well, I'm here. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's smart to put that that in the policy so that we can improve it. Okay.
Yeah, and you should actually grow. Formatting really needs to.
Yeah, this one you get capitals.
All I would say actually about that is it doesn't need to go in here. But that when we send out reminders or when people sign up for the event, that it's very clear. To them, because I know we would get pushed back if someone says, well, it doesn't say I need to show up on time, you know.
I know on our calendar right now, for example, we put, um, but like the the three things about the unintended child policies. Like on every single folder and then link to the policy. So it could be that we need to have a program reminders with the link.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Gonna go read it, but it'll be there.
You don't have to have the full policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But but certain excerpts from the policy that are, you know, really important for somebody who's signing up for something at a quick glance.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the sewing one, like my son attended that and he had a good time. But like if, I don't know, if there are any requirements, I I think for the sewing one, actually, it was said like. You need to kind of commit to coming like three different times and. Um, they would accommodate a little bit if they could, like when. It would happen, but you you were supposed to come those three times, right? So like that that type of of language in the program signup or program reminders would be. That would be my recommendation.
That it's a series. And committing to.
That's a series, yeah, or or if it's like a hard stop of like, if you're ten minutes late, like we had, we can't hold your spot, you know, like if. If it's that type of program. Cause again, I think it's. If you say, well, it was in the policy, like you said, people aren't going to read the policy. So. If it if it's that big of a deal and it happens frequently enough, at least that gives us a very clear. Way to say, look, it was in the email, you know, that we sent you for the program. So. Sorry, like there's nothing, you know, and that way they can be mad, but they can't be mad at at the library. It would leave them very, very little room to be mad. Justifiably mad, I guess.
They get program reminder emails.
I I wasn't sure how exactly that worked, but. I assume there's either a sign up form somewhere or an email saying.
Um, I'm not sure. I know that you, I think that it's hard to schedule. I could be wrong. I don't do a lot of programming. But my understanding is when once you register, you're not going to get a reminder unless the staff say, remind these participants and like send the blank. Blanket email out to the group masking their emails. I would need to check.
Yeah, I I would just say wherever. Wherever the information about the program is that they will have needed to. Have read it.
How big of a problem are no shows?
So it was an issue when a few summers ago, pre pandemic, five years ago. We had, um. The whole calendar for June and Ju- and July and August got released. And July first, anybody could sign up for any programs for the whole summer. So we immediately had like one or two families go through and sign up for events every single week all summer. Which I were just serving the same people over and over and others couldn't get in as opposed to now where it's like either two or three weeks before the program. That's when registration opens up. It's first come, first served. There's a waiting list. I'm trying to make sure we have lots of different people coming and things. It was some programs as options to open up a second. Session if we can.
So. I'm sorry, I didn't see your edits here.
So I just added the the reasonable accommodation request back in.
Right, you changed.
To the bottom of the program policy. And then the other edit that I made was variety of reason, including but not limited to. And then I tried to tweak this and now it goes V E F E G H.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna not try and edit in public meetings. Yeah.
My letter is a vault. On the notes too.
Yeah.
Exit later.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion?
Um, under attendance, under D, do we want to specify that we mean children's programming? That's pretty specific to children's program. Family room and tutoring are available by reservation. Should a participant need a break during a program, please say staff order to make conversation. For children and their families.
You're only saying that because you said family room.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're saying the family room or tutoring room, right? So you're still really speaking to all ages. So you don't really need to say for children.
Yeah.
And their families. If you were just saying the family room is available for children and their families.
Okay.
Makes sense. Got an M instead of an R.
Yeah.
For family group.
Yeah, yeah.
If we say how we're gonna let patrons know about us ten minutes late, I. When we were discussing it.
So I don't think it needs to be in here, but I was just recommending.
On the event calendar or?
Well, I think so. Some programs, uh, like you can be late for.
Yeah.
Cause there's not like set slots, right? I mean, it would be kind of rude during a presentation, but you're not gonna necessarily be like. Can't come in, can't come in, you know, it's like, oh. So I think if if it has strict requirements, I mean, you've called out some. Yeah, registr- registr- registrants more than ten minutes late. Yeah, May, I like that.
Yeah, it totally depends on the nature of the program, but we can add in boiler boilerplate language that is as long as we want it. Every time somebody signs up for a storytime and it could be different language if they sign up for a lecture, like adult teen and children's programs all sort of have standard.
Yeah, whatever you communicate, yeah.
Highlight or not, you can always have the link.
Yeah.
To the policy.
But that doesn't change the discussion of how we want this policy to read. Um, but certainly John's suggestion is a good one to let people know like. That way they're not surprised and expected to read the whole library policy to know, oh, I guess I was ten minutes late, so I can't go.
And this is just programs they register for and they have the lectures and things people don't register for them.
Okay. Any further discussion? So.
Do you want to clarify that on that point? Cause now we've got it there that they may forfeit their spot. So they might go in and be like, wow. I mean, is that gonna be a a situation where they?
Which is depending on the nature of the program. If it's a performance or there's limited pieces, you can't come in.
I'll just put that.
Try and explain every single example.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say just put depending on the nature of the program. And that that covers it.
Okay. I'm ready to move on. Yeah, great. So Beth, um, you will. Take these changes into consideration and we'll plan to have it on our next agenda for final review.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you want this to go to the union as well? It's got to be edited. It's still like all behind. It's like we want to take up the track changes. It's a new program for them, so they don't.
Yeah.
I mean, before, before our next meeting now, do you want to go to them?
I think so, unless we wanted an opportunity to to read it after Beth puts it back together. I don't think.
I think it's fine.
Yeah. Okay. And the final item on the agenda, uh, I think we're doing good for time is the display policy. That was a short one. So we just need to make this our own. Right, so I think this is, um. Taken from Westford. Don't ask me how I know that. I don't know that I have a lot to say on this policy. I feel it would be better coming from someone who works here. Um, you know, things like staff recommends titles are curated. Nothing's in here's really stood out as, oh, no, we shouldn't say that. I think it was well written. And concise and to the point.
Yeah, I don't think I have any.
Yeah, you could just say in diversity of the community, period. You know, I'm just saying caption. We've already said it's a gifting public library.
Sorry, I think I think it would be funny if we left it in there, like specifically not Westford. Community members.
We have to research their demographics in order to like that. I don't know where Westford is.
I think they're west of here. I'm serious.
Somebody, so.
That's true, yeah. Right on the end of the end of the flatter.
Yeah. Anything you want to add here? What is, what are we trying to say with our library displays policy? What are we addressing? Anything that. No- nothing to do with public or patrons wanting to put stuff in. No- nothing to do with public or patrons wanting to put stuff in the library. This is only.
I think it does say that patrons can't walk up and change staff displays and insert things into staff displays, that that's inappropriate because it is a staff display. And if you wanna have a display, you can go through the channel to pick. You know, an area where public display is allowed and ask to curate your own display.
Yeah.
I think it's also that just because I really love to read romance novels and I'm gonna put up a display of romance novels in February, that doesn't mean that Tana Grafton loves romance novels. Or endorses romance novels, like that's my personal preference to do something that I am interested in and have expertise in as a staff member to promote to the community at large.
Yeah.
And I think it also speaks without having. Any time boundedness to it that displays change. So sort of if if you don't like it, it's gonna change. It might take a week, it might take thirty days, but things are in constant rotation and and they're fresh and they're timely and they're.
I have a question about displays, um so. And I saw a really interesting display. I think it was in the large printing room. And it was, it was like video, video game week and there's all really great. Um you know, literature, graphic novels about the history of video gaming and stuff. They they took a couple items. But now that those items are missing, it really does, this is what we're talking about, library displays.
Yeah.
Right, so this is not like, you know. This is mostly items for people to check out.
Yeah.
So, you know, what's to say, I was like, wow, I love all this stuff, and I just grab all of it and clear it out. You know, because I I was tempted to. Good, you know, what if there's only three things there? I mean, is that gonna be replenished? Um because if if I take all those things away, you know, it it diminishes the reason.
Or some could be malicious.
That happens, it does, like throughout the country, people go in and check up. All the things from a display that they don't agree with, so that it can't be checked out by someone else.
And I think that's can be expected, um and that's someone's prerogative if they wanna do that.
I was gonna say, I mean, to can. To combat both of those in a way, uh you could print out a cover of the book. And you know how like. Sometimes in a store, you go there and you take the last one and then there's like a little thing behind it that says like.
This was here.
This was here, right, like.
That's what Kara has started doing in the glass display case out there because we still don't have handles for the glass doors and it's a little intimidating to push on them and move them at the same time. So she started that February-ish, I think, and it's worked out really well.
Yeah, that's really smart idea because if you're trying to show uh the collection. And it's could be really popular, right? Yeah, yeah, like so many things on the books like me, but you still wanna publicize that item. Um cuz I I probably have it for over a week and you never get to see it, you know, this video game minute. Um or also just replenish replenish that that was it, like, do you have a stock of items that are ready to go or is it only those five items?
I think the people who make the displays, like somebody has has taken ownership of or shepherding that display, so they're the ones where we're like to help them on, oh, do we need more beetreeds?
Perfect, okay.
But like, we've also done some book lists. Which we highlight on our website, so you can get like all of the things that. They're easy, kind of a staff communication on what the purpose of the display is too, because like. One time I put it like beetreeds and we're like, is this literally like? This story is set in the ocean, or it's a cheesy novel that you can read quickly, like those were two different versions. And I put something, who's around you that walked by and was like this, and I was like, I did it, what did I do wrong? Please tell me what I did wrong, so I didn't know where you're going with that, but like Jane has her like cowboys, so. It would be nice if when they're gathering titles, if there are backup titles, what you're saying, because there are a lot of holes in this place too, or if it just. Be a matter of when staff members come in that that's on their to do list for.
Yeah.
Like the beginning of their shift before they get into anything else or end their shift or. Somewhere around there to just double check your display to see if it needs to be replenished.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's pretty.
Yeah, anyways, I I had just some questions about it, but I think the the policy looks fine.
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
My take on library displays is there to display the local collections. And not request books from other libraries and put their books on display in our library. Um and that's what's been happening. So I've asked for managers to meet with me to discuss it. Because what happens is now, if if the book is from Upton. And even though it fills the beach read display, because either ours was out or we didn't own it, now you have, you can't use self check. So you have to go and have a staff member check it out for you because it's coming on hold for our library from another library. And when we're trying to reduce staff duties, we don't have enough staffing. To take the extra work to request other books from libraries that they might wanna have on their own displays. And take it away from them and then put it in our library. Patrons don't care what it's coming from, but I think the assumption is it's our book. And now I have to take another additional staff step to check it out because we can't just check it out. I prefer what we're displaying is our local materials and collections to boost our own holes or our own, sorry, our own statistics.
Yep. I feel like a true manager. No, it's perfect. Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does that uh would that warrant any change here?
That what it says right now is it's the library's collections and formats. Purchased under the A G S of the trustee approved materials selection policy.
Okay. So that reinforces your. New point, right?
Yeah, and we have a broad enough budget that if we only have five books on video gaming and we wanna do a display on video gaming books. We can buy some. We just have to put that, if we're gonna do it during, say, international gaming, which is in November.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think it makes sense as long as we just. I mean, so it sounds like it's covered here already, so we just, I mean, or or I guess you just need to communicate that to the staff that. Uh the reason that this is important, right?
Yeah, it's for our stats.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I feel you're starting.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just wondering, cuz I I'm not a librarian. Or even a library associate at this point that does the displays too, if it's a matter of. I have a funny cute idea I saw on social media or something for a library display, I'm gonna Google. Titles that go with it or whatever and then. And kind of working one direction as opposed to like working from our collection forward. Working from an idea backward. I mean, I love our displays, they're wonderful. I mean, Ellie even had one that smelled like chocolate one time. Chocolate scented air fresheners, are you walking like, does that smell like chocolate? Are you kidding me? Very intense. So that's, that's a thing for them to discuss. That was just my, where my brain went in that moment.
Yeah, okay. So I think this one just probably needs a little bit of formatting, um. And that it can go go to legal. Um I think legal likes short.
Should it go to the union first or legal? I think it should go to the union.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I want legal to have the final draft before the trustee.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that we're not getting back and forth and paying twice for legal's.
Yeah.
So to be to be clear, just about that last point you were making, do you expect any pushback on that?
I don't know, we haven't had a chance to meet, I'm just.
Okay.
Like he chose up in the patron comment while patrons complaining that they can't just check off the book.
Ah, all right.
Well, let's eliminate that problem and just make sure that we own things that we wanna put on display and follow.
Yep.
And and but also it's a concern for our our fellow C W Mars members, like everybody's doing beetreeds. Right now, we can't take all the Ellen Hildebrand books in July and put them on display at the library. We can't, we plan ahead. There was one last year that was beetreeds and it was like. Someone's personal take on it and there was like some thrillers in there. I'm like, I would not want to read that at the beach, but that's just me, yeah. But I was like, is Jaws a beet tree tree? Not for me.
Okay. Any further discussion on the library displays policy? Okay. Hearing none. Uh we don't have any items from your business. So the next item is discussing policies to review at the next meeting. Of our current policies, what do we feel go on the agenda uh the next time we meet?
It's not in ongoing business.
Well, yeah, I mean, what would go in ongoing business and then uh cuz we didn't say new policies to add.
Just be feedback from find free program display.
So our art exhibit and food are gonna be sent out to the board, but we won't have the review from them yet, correct?
You don't need to go out for the July meeting, um so we have a little bit of time.
Okay.
And it's probably best to send those. Right around the sweet spot, which is probably two weeks.
Okay.
Um because like we get so so many emails and materials to review to to have it near inbox for a month. You know, so I sent that to you a month ago, oh. You know, I I'm guilty, that's I'm speaking from experience.
Yeah.
We did it, did we do that? No, we didn't do it. So next time we'll do it right away.
Yeah.
And it's too early.
Yeah, okay, so those two are essentially kind of like table till when would that be?
Maybe that's the the the, I bet we can jump ahead to what are we meaning?
Sure.
But.
Yeah.
I will say that volunteer policy doesn't exist. I have a draft and we need a volunteer. And Carrie had asked about it.
Yeah.
Put that on our new business.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's my point, like, how are we sending out with what we're currently working on? Um I think we're ready to put on something new too.
I would say I have one brand new policy and then we still have material selection, which is gonna undergo revision.
Yeah.
Find free library, which is not entirely new, but has changed pandemic policies and hopefully. And it's all stay as ongoing business.
Yeah.
So I would propose only having volunteer policy under new business.
Okay. Agreed. Yeah.
Uh but you have a draft that I'll send out tomorrow.
Okay. Uh do we have any, so sorry, any further discussion? Okay, um. Oh, wow, I can see your finger. What am I looking at?
I was wondering about, cuz yeah, it was on this side before, so I was trying not to put my hand over there, but.
Um any public input? Uh no. And uh the next meeting. So. I would probably say early August. When is the August um? Library trustee meeting.
Twenty third.
Twenty third.
And what is our new date for the July meeting? Is it the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Okay.
Good, cuz I'm seeing Barbie on the twentieth.
Your home calendar?
Yeah. We have a uh we have a movie pass this summer.
Oh, right.
And we're seeing all the other hot movies, gotta get them out, you know.
So Red, White and Royal Blue, which is based on a romance novel, uh is gonna, it's the main tour movie and it will be featured on. Prime, Amazon Prime on Friday, August eleventh, and it is on my home calendar. Do not make any plans, so you're watching.
Yeah.
I get it.
So, well, what day of the week, I guess, are we shooting for? A Monday or going back to Wednesdays or?
I would really like to meet on Wednesdays. Wednesday too, because otherwise then I have to Ryan has to rearrange his work schedule too.
Yeah, so National Lightout is the first of August. That's a lot of work for you guys.
That's a Tuesday.
It's not. It's not, it's it's not so bad that we couldn't meet on Wednesday the second.
Right, so that's what I mean, um okay, yeah, I can meet Wednesday the second. Thursdays are kind of out for me, so Monday, Monday through Wednesday is fine. Yeah. And we should have enough content to meet on the second.
Yes.
Not the ninth. Okay.
I think so, so the ninth is ukulele.
Yeah.
And I'm not available.
Okay.
The sixteenth, I could be available, but then I then our meetings. Sorry, bye. Sorry, my. One of those coffee mugs that says everything I let go of as quote marks. Trying to get back to let go space.
So.
That's your job, isn't it?
I put on my personal schedule, so I'm gonna forget. You just hit enter and it went down to my box and I was just changing. I couldn't add it to my calendar. I'm getting goofy now.
Yeah.
August second here, seven P M?
Yes.
Yeah, um do we wanna stop hybrid? I think we can usually have a quorum. I mean, it just has to be three people, so like when you weren't here, we still could meet, we met in person. Um so that would be my preference, but if we find that during the winter, uh we can always change it, right?
Yeah.
So I think the next meeting in person would be fantastic.
So if it's not hybrid, we just don't have to do the Zoom.
We still have to record it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Might as well.
Yeah.
Unless we meet over at the municipal.
No.
Well, that's my throw.
Well, it's really.
Bodies in the building.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'd prefer to meet, have all our meetings at the library, I mean, that's why we built it.
Yeah.
Not why we built it, but a good reason why we built it, the way we did. Okay. I will um hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.